In times of disagreement in our community, we pray for guidance, collaboration, and understanding. We ask for special blessings for the family of Watson Haynes, a great leader in our community who shared so much with so many here at the college in Elsinore. Thank you for the time we have together, and please guide us in each and every decision and conversation today. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, made visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. SPC spotlights just...
Yes.
Do we have people to pitch out through that?
No, I'll be doing that.
Okay.
Good morning, good morning, St. Petersburg College. It is so good to see all of you out there today. We had a fantastic 95th anniversary. I want to thank the foundation for all of their hard work in making that happen. We had a fun time last Wednesday at the Rays game, where we had over, I want to say, 300 students and employees there. And it was wonderful for us to get a check from the Tampa Bay Rays. And then we had a fantastic alumni celebration on a Friday night here in this very room. It was well attended. It was good to see a lot of our alumni and our faculty and staff who joined us. And then the city of St. Pete, I had a chance to speak at their meeting, where the mayor declared September 12 officially St. Petersburg College Day. And then, after that, we had a wonderful celebration here at the Clearwater, at the St. Pete campus. And I want to thank the board for joining us in that event. We got a chance to see some of our alumni, including the sons of one of our oldest, our first graduate in 1929, I think. And they also graduated from the college. And so it was just so good to see them, the Gibbs Junior College alumni. It was a great day. I cannot wait for our celebration next year. We started a new tradition, and it was excellent. And I had a great time. Thank you all. Hands go out to our employees, the board, and everybody who's done a great job here at the college. Thank you so much. We also held at the Clearwater campus a, I want to call it an energy, an electric vehicle seminar, where we had several children from Pinellas County Schools, from some of the private schools. They worked on solar energy and all kinds of exciting things for our future. And I was very proud of St. Petersburg College for leading the way in having that, and looking forward to us getting more into the autonomous vehicles and all that cool stuff that I really don't know how to do. We are also celebrating with our Mira program. A lot of our alums have done some great things. And I hope that when we leave this meeting, we can all walk over to the Mira Center so you can see the work that our alumni have done, the things hanging on the wall to show the impact that the college is making in the music industry and recording artists' business. We're doing some really great, great things. September 22, SPC will hold a supplier diversity information session for those companies who want to engage the college, especially our minority, small business and women-led companies who want to learn, how do you engage SPC? What does it look like? What does the work look? How do we do the work? And so I want to applaud Vice President Hunt for her vision and the hard work that the team is doing to make sure we diversify our business and work that we do with others. On a note of individuals at the college, I received this information by request. So if you're not listed, you just didn't give it to me. Dr. Connor is serving with LEAP Tampa Bay as a member of the EFCAN Local College Access Network, and is going to be working on a Community of Practice 2.0, on building Florida's talent pipeline by driving Black and Brown student success on a system-wide level. Dr. Jackie Skrid is attending an international conference on Education, Humanities, and Social Sciences and Management, which will be held in Paris, France. And she's presenting doctoral research on the Power Collaborative, a case study of business engaging and cross-sector partnerships. And Dr. Tashika Griffith, Provost of Clearwater, was recently featured in USA Today, where she discussed how SPC addresses student needs for transportation. And the list really could go on and on and on. Hats off to all of you, very proud of the work that you have done. And those are my spotlights for today.
I just wanted to echo, last week was extraordinary to be able to come down here and participate in SPC Day. So for everyone who spent so much time and effort and energy, you know, preparing and getting this place ready, to me, listening to the history of the start of this school from St. Petersburg Junior College to what it is today, you know, it really was exciting, being a lifelong resident of Pinellas County, and knowing the impact from Tarpon to St. Petersburg, but seeing it was awesome. And made me very, very proud to be a Titan. So to everybody who spent the time, thank you very much. I think the impact that this college is making in our community is cool. And it's also fun to see all the social media posts, the excitement that is building. I mean, you know, I didn't see it a few years ago, and I really feel like we're going in a direction that is exciting. And I know it takes a lot of extraordinary work from a lot of people, so thank you.
Very good. Not to belabor it, but SPC Day was wonderful last week. So thank you to the foundation team, and Jesse's team, and all the provosts, and the people who participated with that. It was really great to not only celebrate the future of the college, but as Trustee Buck said, really honor the past. And seeing those folks there was really wonderful. So thank you for all of that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Will we be, are we meeting before we go to New York next?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so.
We'll report on that next month.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments?
No, I do not have any other comments.
Perfect. It's time for public comments, and we are open for public comments. Anyone who wishes to speak, if you have not already, please provide Rebecca Turner your comment card. And I know we have a few for today, so I'm excited to hear you speak. We'll start with Nikki Riggs.
I need to introduce myself, right?
Go ahead. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Nikki Riggs. I am both a faculty instructor and alumni of St. Petersburg College's School of Veterinary Technology. I am coming before the board today to address a statement that was published at the May 17 Board Meeting during the presentation on classroom utilization provided by Cushing and Wakefield. During the slide discussing use of Tier One properties, it was noted that the veterinary technology campus maintained a higher utilization rate in their classrooms than other campuses, but that SPCA believes that the program may be outside of the core mission of the college. I would like to specifically address that statement. The mission at SPC is to empower our students and community to achieve success and economic mobility through academic excellence and engagement. I firmly believe that the veterinary technology program does fit within this mission, and I appreciate the opportunity to support this statement. The veterinary technology program at SPC began operation 50 years ago, and during that time has developed into a top program in the nation. Hold on.
You got it.
You're good, yeah.
You got it.
Our students are continually engaged in the classroom and challenged to learn not only information, but to develop their practical applications of skills. Our faculty and adjunct staff are made up of committed professionals that bring a wealth of content knowledge to the program and continue to develop unique pedagogical techniques in the classroom. Many of our campus students come into this program with little to no previous experience, and the vast majority have secured paying positions in veterinary practices prior to graduation. Regarding economic mobility, graduates from an accredited veterinary technology program have the ability to leverage their education to secure positions with both higher wages and improved benefits. The veterinary field is currently facing a national shortage of both qualified technicians and veterinarians. And this increased need has further empowered our graduates to secure working conditions that contribute to an improved quality of life. Certified veterinary technicians are also employed in many different areas across the field of animal health, including government positions with USDA focusing on public health, small and specialty animal hospitals, large animal and equine facilities, shelter medicine, wildlife rehabilitation, zoo settings, laboratory research settings, practice management, and marketing, just to name a few. Our students are all informed of these different career pathways that they can pursue following graduation. Our program is invaluable to our local community. There are several hundred veterinary facilities in the Tampa Bay region, and they all benefit from our local highly skilled graduates. During the past two years, there has been an influx of residents to the Tampa Bay region, and they brought their animals with them. Additionally, many current residents acquired new animals during COVID lockdown while working from home. The animal care facilities in this area have directly felt this impact, and the need for more employees to meet the higher demand for animal care has never been greater. Our students also participate in community engagement and assist with outreach and improve animal well-being at facilities in our county. The Seabird Sanctuary, Horses for Handicap, Pinellas County Animal Services, SPCA of Tampa Bay, Pinellas Humane Society, and many rescue groups are just a few of the organizations that benefit from this relationship. In closing, as demonstrated by these references, the veterinary technology program at SPC does empower our students and community to achieve success and economic mobility through academic excellence and engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some fantastic speed reading.
Sorry.
You're good.
Oh, three minutes.
Tricia Goram.
Good morning. Nikki's a hard act to follow. I'm Trish Goram. I'm the instructor in charge of the veterinary technology program. Also, I am a 1991, not to date myself, graduate of this program, and then came back to teach in 1996, and have been here ever since. Became full-time in 2003. One thing I'd like to take this opportunity to do is recognize our faculty. We were just recognized as Program of the Year from the Association of Veterinary Technician Educators at the annual conference in August. This organization represents programs from the United States, Canada, the United Kingdom, Thailand, and Australia. If they could stand... This program faculty, all of the veterinary technicians are graduates of our program. They do amazing things, maintaining their clinical work outside of their teaching. We have a VTS in veterinary behavior. Our veterinarian is working with NASA on animal welfare. We have critical care specialists in our profession and in our field. As this board moves into difficult decisions regarding our program, I would like to invite all of you to come interact, come to our campus, interact with our students, see them working with our patients in their laboratory setting, see them interacting with the community, and the critical care nursing skills that they are learning. Additionally, I'd like to invite you to our career fair on October 15, so that you can interact with our veterinary community. We have representatives coming from all over the country to participate in this career fair. That way you can understand the vital part that St. Pete College plays in providing veterinary services within Pinellas County and across the country. We look forward to sharing these opportunities with you, and we look forward to seeing you on campus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You said October 15? You said October 15?
October 15, 2 to 5 o'clock.
Great. Morning, Trustee Givens.
Morning.
Elizabeth Lytle Bryant.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board. My name's Elizabeth Lytle Bryant. I am a clinical manager at Clearwater Animal Referal and Emergency. I'm an adjunct professor at St. Petersburg College for the veterinary technology campus, and I'm also a relief veterinary technician for a local general practitioners office. You mentioned, sir, community. That is what the veterinary technology campus is. You look at our stats compared to Hillsborough County Community College, it's much different, and it is because of the on-campus program. I have, I was graduate in 2013 from the associate's program, graduate from 2015 from the bachelor's program. And both times, I saw people from across the whole state make a trip two to three times a week to come to an on-campus program that is of such quality of what we have. I came back last year to teach simply because of the amount of community within one campus, within one program, within this college. So you talk about community, sir? This is a community. This is a community far beyond the walls of SPC, far beyond this nation. It is a problem right now. It is a problem in our industry. SPC tries to address it forefront. We also supply multiple CE's. Hillsborough County Community College, I don't mean to doubt on them, but they don't do those. They don't do those for the community that's already set in place. You have people who walk and work around the clock. Veterinary technology and the veterinary industry is not like human medicine. It is not an industry that we have a nine-to-five job and we clock out at five. It is 24/7. And I employ you, if you have a dog or cat at home, look at them. It's a dying industry. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few more comment cards. I think that that is the last one from VetTech. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on VetTech? Right. Angela Taylor Sweet.
We've got four more steps. And the podium is right there.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I was on it. Is this microphone right here?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good morning.
Good morning. The Urban Technology Institute is a designated digital disruptive engine with the capacity to streamline policies and practices that impede potential and sustain poverty. Identify scholarly content to engage government and civic debate, and inspire critical analysis to, that contribute to solutions transforming leaders into agents of change. For example, should physical agility be a condition of employment? I will argue the affirmative. St. Petersburg College, an award-winning workforce development institution, has successfully, has done an excellent job in excluding the indigent, the, those of different abilities, those of, those temporarily incapacitated, incapacitated, and those of birth defects from competitive labor markets, denying ADA and human rights to hundreds of thousands of Tampa Bay constituents, condoning a physical requirement clause at the end of job vacancies. The, this has, but, and so what this has done was, it, it, positioned St. Petersburg College where they would be party with upholding Social Security definition of disability as unable to work, and taking part in out-of-control government spending, because those with different abilities would have to depend on the government to live. So the, the... Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Jessica Magnani. Did I get it kind of right?
Close.
Sorry. What is it?
Magnani.
I've been pronouncing it wrong.
The what?
I've been pronouncing it wrong.
Magna-
It sounds like if you speak Spanish, like the enya, manana, or if you can say lasagna, you can say magnani.
Okay. I mess it up either way.
You're fine. All right.
He does eat lasagna, though.
Don't we all? All right. Good morning, members of the board. Dr. Williams, my name is Jessica Magnani, and I'm speaking to you today as a longtime faculty member to ask you to reconsider the changes to insurance premiums voted on at the last board meeting. Although the changes purport to ensure equity, they will have the opposite effect, as those employees earning the least will be paying as much for insurance as our highest earners. Many employees will see the cost of plans increase more than 40% in 2023, and anywhere from 200% to 500% in 2024. Paying over $1,000 a month for health insurance will be impossible for many of us, and in some cases amounts to more than half of an employee's take-home pay. While some may, as the board noted, choose to uninsured their children and their families, a desperately painful choice to be sure, or to move to a spouse's plan, I fear that others will seek employment elsewhere, and we will be hard-pressed to attract talented employees willing to replace them. I ask the board to reconsider this action and implement an insurance structure that is both affordable and sustainable for the institution and for its many dedicated employees. Retaining our best faculty, staff, and administrators preserves the continuity and institutional knowledge that not only ensures that our students succeed, but that also that our college continues to thrive. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Tara Newsom.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, President.
Good morning, trustees. My name is Tara Newsom. I am a professor in the Social Behavioral Sciences Department, as well as the Director of our Center for Civic Learning and Community Engagement. I came to St. Petersburg College in 2007 because I had this wonderful speaker at Eckerd named Devron Givens. And he came in, and he taught me about St. Petersburg College and what the mission was. I came here and I learned from mentors like Dean Smiley, Dean DeMuirz. I worked with President Williams and all these wonderful faculty and staff. I wanted to share today the same sentiments that Jessica has regarding the meaningfulness of our health care. I trust St. Petersburg College not only with my career, but my family. I am the major breadwinner of four children in my family. I understand the fiduciary duty that the board has to the institution, but as trustees, we also have a duty to our employees, not just faculty, but staff, that are in a unique position to not be able to use the marketplace to secure insurance. I find it to be a privilege to work here. Today is my birthday. Yeah, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And when I woke up, I was so grateful. I said a prayer of thanks that I get to come to St. Petersburg College to teach, to engage the community. I work with not only my friends, but these are my family. And it's not just my family that's at risk of not having health insurance. It's those that I work, that clean my classroom, that keep the facilities going, that work tirelessly, never at the board meetings, because they're unable to take off time from work. Those are our family. That's our SPC family. When I start to evaluate the college and how we look at the success of our students, we use measurements, right? Salaries as measurements of success. The legislature uses salaries as measurements of success. After the new 2024 implementation of the healthcare costs, faculty, and I can only speak on faculty because that's the only salary bands that I really understand, we will be way below the level of the legislature saying that we have a robust and meaningful career that would be sustainable. That's the measurement of the legislature. I guess that could be also the measurement of the board. I simply ask, we entrust you with our college, we entrust you with our families, we entrust you with our careers, if you could prayerfully consider reopening this and relooking at it. Dr. Devon Upier has this wonderful movement through the college, and maybe you've heard about it. You belong at SPC. I belong at SPC. You belong at SPC. Let's dig in and reopen and see if we can all stay at SPC. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the privilege of working here.
Thank you. Happy birthday. It's all the public comment cards that we have. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I'll close our public comment section. And moving on, in the board notes, should have found the minutes from the last meeting.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Perfect. Minutes are approved.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
If you would, on the board comments, can I, could I go now?
Yeah, of course.
Since I was a little late. Excuse my tardiness, as I have a 6:00 staff meeting, and it ran over. My staff doesn't usually like that, but we had a 6:00 AM staff meeting. I have a 6:00 AM staff meeting on every Tuesday, so that we can get the work done and get it out every week. Mr. Chair, I, let me just say, the college has done an excellent job on a lot of things, a lot of things. We do a good job at a lot of things. Since the last meeting, I've gotten over 60 calls on this insurance issue, from faculty, staff, community members, from a lot of folks. This is, and Dr. Williams explained it to me in great detail last night that we're going to be working on this issue, working in all that stuff with other universities, I mean, other colleges across the state. But in all honesty, I feel like, just as I asked the employees to come to us when we talked about unionization, now, they didn't do that, and that's okay. They asked us, they're right. I feel like, as trustees, we have to, we have a fiduciary responsibility to step in and help out and figure this out. Problems aren't solved in colleges and universities across the country. As you both well know, we're good at what we do, and that's why we're paid very high salaries to do that. That's where problems, businesses are created because they solve a problem, right? So if there's a problem related to insurance in the college, we shouldn't be looking to our HR director, who has very limited knowledge and experience, to try to resolve that with the president, who has very limited knowledge and experience. That's not a knock on them. It's not a knock on them, because they couldn't do what I do every day. They can't do what Katie does every day. You, Dr. Williams can't do what you do every day, Mr. Buck. So what I'm saying is, I feel like we need to step back from the issue. It's fine that we're working with other colleges. Their employees are not my responsibility. What I feel like is that we're in this situation a little bit because, and it's not totally her fault. This has been going on since Bill Law, so let's take that off the table, that this is a Dr. Williams issue. It's not. I said, and a lot of you heard me say this under Dr. Law, that this insurance thing is going to become an issue. I told them it was going to be a $2 million issue. I told Bill Law it was going to be a $2 million issue, because I had some experience in working with the insurance products at our own company. I could see it. I had somebody in our company evaluate it. And so what I'm saying is, sometimes we lose a little focus, because, and this isn't, like, no knock on the administration. Administration, they make a lot of, they make more money than the folks that are teaching. It's not going to affect them like it will Tara Newsom and Ms. Lasagna, because I forgot, Magnani. I say that, please take that in jest. I'm just kidding. And I say that to say that sometimes administration can do things, and it has more of an impact on the folks at the bottom than it does at the folks that are at the top. And that's because, even in my own situation, this won't impact me, won't impact probably half of you, won't impact some of the people that work at the top, because they can afford to take that hit. But this is a real pocketbook issue. And in these days and times, there were inflation and other things are real. And we don't, I don't know when that's going to change. I think that as a board, we have to take a position where we say, look, Dr. Williams, we're willing to help. We need to find an expert in the field to come in and work with the staff and the president to figure this issue out, because, I'm telling you, if we continue to go to 2020, 24, it's only going to get worse. Inflation, the economy, insurance costs are always going up. We're going to have to have a creative way of figuring this out. And the only way you get a creative way of figuring this out, Mr. Buck, this is your area, is you got to find an expert in this area to figure it out with us, right? You don't go, we don't go sell real estate at the college, because that's not what we do, right? Well, nobody here is an insurance actuary. I know, do you have one on staff?
No.
No.
Okay. So we don't have real estate personnel staff, right? Because we don't sell real estate. We don't do insurance. We're in this situation because colleges and universities are trying to do things without having experts involved in the situation. And we really need, I feel like as a board, we should take that position and figure it out, and figure out an expert to come in and work with the college. I'm not going to mandate the president to do that, but I think it's just a good thing. I will ask that we pull back this 2024 thing until we get a good committee put together to work with the president on this. I don't have to be on this committee, but I think some faculty, some staff, and some other folks should be on the committee that we come up with as a board and help with the issue. So that's that issue. But I have had numerous and numerous and numerous amounts of calls. I mean, literally, people have called every day about this issue since we've had the board meeting.
Correct.
Right? And so that's why I think, you know, as a board member, some people say, well, you're not supposed to be involved in that. As a board member, the governor appointed us to do what? We're responsible for the fiduciary responsibility of this college, but we're also responsible to the public. And these folks live here, they work here, they play here, and they are part of the public. And a lot of times in organizations, and it may not be the case here, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, so please don't run out and say, Devron said you can't do this. I'm saying, a lot of times, people that are in a good job, the state jobs are good jobs, right? We know that they're here every year, usually have great insurance products. But sometimes they feel like, people at the bottom feel like they can't say anything to other folks because of retribution and other things. That may not happen here. But I know that some people ask me not to use their names or not to say anything because they just want to give me their feedback. Well, you know, it doesn't do any good to say, hey, well, give me the name of the person. Let's just fix the problem. Let's just fix the problem. There's a problem. People don't complain when there's not a problem. When there's a problem, they complain. So I'm asking the board, I'm not saying at this particular point in the meeting we need to do that, but I'd ask you to consider that moving forward. Mr. Chair, the last thing that I would bring up is this, the issue with the Vet Tech. Again, another issue that in the last week or so, a lot of calls from legislators, from people in government in Tallahassee, people in administration in the governor's office, I mean, asking me about what's going on, what are we doing? Again, when we do things, we have to figure and understand. I believe this is more of a communications issue after talking to the president, but I do believe that we should take more time and figure through this. And the reason I say that is, as I begin to think and ponder on this particular issue, I look at it and I say, well, Dr. Williams tells me that as a vet tech, you know, you can go work right into, in a veterinarian's office without having the AS degree, right?
Right.
And that may be, that is true. I mean, I guess that's true. I don't know if it's true or not. You tell me that, but I believe you, and you always tell me truth, so I believe that. But just because it's not needed doesn't mean that when you have it, it doesn't add value. And if we are a college and we're supposed to add value to lives, then this degree is important. And I know you said we're not getting rid of it. We're just doing it differently.
That's right.
I would ask that we talk to the folks. I can't remember the last time I walked or drove anywhere and hadn't seen somebody walking a dog or some type of animal, even a pig over in Pasco County. I saw somebody walking on a leash. The Equine and Bovine Nutrition, where I went to school at Florida, was a big thing because there's agribusiness in the state of Florida. And they always have jobs, and they are always busy. I've never seen, I have friends that are in the equine nutrition business and they live in Ocala. I've never seen this guy without a job. I've never, we need to figure out what the value statement in this particular degree is and figure out how to work alongside the folks that were here today and other folks and figure out how we can come up with a good plan. And I think Dr. Williams can do that. I'm just asking the board that we urge administration to try to figure it out and meet with these folks and try to figure that out. The other thing in that is, just remember this, just because, you know, I know a bunch of, I know a bunch of guys that are longshoremen, and there's a few of them, they drive forklifts, right? It's not required for them to have a forklift license, but the ones that have the license, guess what? They get paid more. And if there's something that we need to do with the legislature to make sure that our folks are being valued once they leave the program, or there's something more that we need to do to make sure that they pass the boards at a higher rate, then let us do that. But this goes back to the question that I always ask at these meetings. What is St. Pete College known for? When you talk about Eckerd, what do I say? They're known for having excellent writers. Here's a program that we're known for, and we're figuring out how to disband it because of the state report. State's not always right. Let's figure out how to expand and make it a more vibrant program, because I don't, I don't see people buying less dogs or cats. I see them buying more, like, people that can't even afford animals have animals. And so I'm just urging this board that we really, seriously, look at this issue as a board and come up with a solution. It may not, like I said, Mr. Chair, it may not be at this particular juncture in the meeting, but at some point, I think we really should have a discussion on both of these items.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Gibbons.
Mr. Chair, I just want to follow up on the Vet Tech piece. I think that Trustee Gibbons is right, that there's a major communication issue. There is no intention to close the program. But the board has also challenged us with looking at a better management of our properties and facilities. All of our health programs and several other programs are moving. Things are changing, but we're not closing. And I think that's what continues to go out, is that we're shutting down. We're not offering. That's not the case. I do have a meeting with the faculty, I believe, tomorrow at 12:30 with Vet Tech. I too have met with legislators. I've all just talked to legislators. I've talked to the State Board of Education. We've looked at the CTE audit. We have several pieces to this puzzle, and I'm looking forward to meeting with the faculty to share what is really happening and where we're going. But there is no intention to close it. And I think that that is the communication that has gotten, at least from the legislators and folks that have come my way, that's what they were told, is we're shutting it down. That's not the truth. So I do look forward to meeting with you. And I have received, Trustee Kidwell forwarded me some emails, and I've responded to those emails. But I am coming tomorrow to share what the goal is, what the data is, where we're going, and to get feedback. But the board also has challenged us with looking at our facilities. We have had almost a year-long review, space utilization. There are so many pieces to it, and it's really not just a Vet Tech change or movement. There are several programs, and I would love to sit, and I can't wait to meet with you guys tomorrow.
Trustee Gibbons.
Mr. Chair, real quick. Dr. Williams, thank you for doing that. That's number one. Number two, I think you're right, it's a communications issue, but I would ask you do one more thing. I really had to evaluate, after looking at the CTE report. I really tried to evaluate. When moving to debt share, sometimes you can look at things as, well, it's kind of a mandate from the board, or you can look at it as an opportunity. When I looked across the state, I started to look at Vet Tech programs across the state, there aren't that many. For us to be the number one or push our program, make it more robust, and do a better job of, whatever it is we think we can do a better job of.
Completion.
Completion.
They're not graduating.
Yeah, and then if we could do that, maybe we could make, I look at this as an opportunity, honestly.
Right.
So I hope that the folks in Vet Tech see that as well, but I'm all for trying to figure this out. You know, space utilization is a big thing. I mean, I'm not going to argue that because the state is on us constantly about that. But a CTE report, I read it, and I thought it was a good report, but I also think that it's an opportunity for us to get known for doing something better and creating value in our county, I mean, or around the state, so.
And for us to partner, because it's not just a CTE report, it's a fiscal deal. If the CTE report goes through and the state discontinues funding the program, then we would have to have partners to help pay the other part of that. And that is why that audit is more than just, it's an audit. It also carries other responsibilities and changes, and we're all up for that. And I'm looking forward to talking with the faculty and hearing their ideas and concepts and making sure we clarify the goals. And I do think there's some communication missteps, and there are some things that may have caused the faculty some concern, and that is why I was glad to finally get the information from you to come to the meeting tomorrow. So that's what we're going to do.
Thank you. Trustee Gibbs.
I just wanted to address Trustee Gibbons' comments with respect to the health insurance, and thank you all for speaking today. I know sometimes we make decisions here and you might not think there's a lot of discussion, but I wanted to just call out and state the obvious, that we have a lot of discussion individually with the administrative team, with Dr. Williams. We receive a lot of materials, and so we've had the opportunity to ask questions and digest a lot, which, so I don't want to imply that we just sit here and make these decisions. Just for a little bit of history, in the four and a half years that I've been on the board, Trustee Gibbons has repeatedly asked for a variety of health plans, for what is the information on our health plans. One of the very first things Dr. Williams did in response to that, because we had a very spirited discussion about three and a half years ago, because, you may recall, every single year in August or September, this is the discussion we have every year, is what are we going to do with health insurance? About three years ago, Dr. Williams did not want to go through that discussion at a board meeting, and so we actually called a special work session. And the board sat, we were here on Gibbs Campus, I think I recall, for about five hours on a Friday afternoon. I mean, I remember walking in and being in jeans and laughing, that Trustee Stonecypher was in his Friday afternoon gear too. We went through an entire menu of plans. We probably had a choice of 20 plans that had finances attached to them, that had monthly fees, that showed what the percentage paid by the college versus what was the percentage paid. At that meeting, and at the subsequent meeting, we gave direction, the board gave direction to the administration collectively to, on one thing, there was criticism that there were no faculty members and staff on that committee, and that it was all an industry-led committee. So while we made that decision two years ago with industry people, now we're hearing that, we heard at that point that we should have faculty and staff on the committee. So in response to that workshop, two and a half years ago, not only did we create a four-year plan for insurance, to right-size insurance as compared to our peers, but we also established the committee that recently met and has met over the past year that Mr. Harris led with our faculty and staff and team. So while I appreciate, Trustee Gibbons, that now your desire is to have more industry experts on board, I do know that we've kind of been flip-flopping on that and giving the administration the opposite direction, because in earnest, they did exactly what we asked them to do, based on our very intensive discussion. These are long-term plans, and unfortunately, the health insurance marketplace is so erratic and adjusts every year. As we see, I know there's a lot of stress about the Bay Care Florida Blue relationship and what's going to happen there, not only here at the college. My company is a Florida Blue company. We don't know what to do. So, you know, every year at this time, I think that every person who receives employer-sponsored insurance is getting the same news and is struggling and troubled. Knowing that, we hear you. We know it's an issue. The thing that we talk all the time is the privilege that we have, that people choose to come work in an environment like for a government job at the college and give us your resources. And so we know that. We have done this wage and hour study so we can right-size salaries. We know that it's a total, Dr. Williams and I, this past week, were talking about total compensation, to Ms. Newsom's point. I mean, what is the total compensation package? We know that that's important to look at, and we're not ignoring that, and it is part of everything that we are doing now. And so I agree, we need to continue to look at it. And last month at our meeting, Dr. Williams specifically said she is going to continue to look at it, not only with the consortium, but what is right for St. Pete College. So while we've made this decision, I think as we've shown over the years, especially with health insurance, because candidly, I don't think we've ever made a health insurance decision that we haven't backtracked on. And so we do continue to look at this. Please know, we are going to continue to look at it. We have a workshop next month already on the trustee calendar. I think we can, Mr. Chair, if you're willing, and Dr. Williams is willing, we could add this to the topic there. But I don't think we need to redo everything that the administration has done over the past year. We gave this direction two years ago to the administration to form a St. Petersburg College Community Committee to look at this. And those people who also work here are the ones who came back with all of these recommendations of the best way to right-size. We need to accept that, honor that, and look at it from our standpoint as to what the best total compensation is, look at it holistically and see how we can move forward to continue to maintain and recruit our best and brightest.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could? Very quickly, I agree with you, Ms. Cole, but I have people on that committee that called me and said they didn't feel like they got the best outcome. That's number one. Number two is, people that, nobody shows up in your office and says, I want to pay you because there's not a problem, right? Nobody shows up in her office and say, I want to pay, especially at her rate. They want to pay her to do something for them because there's not a problem. There's a problem. They're trying to get something resolved. This many people calling, there is an issue. I'm not asking you to change the committee. It's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, let's, as a board, figure out an outside expert, and I'm sure Jason can give us a bunch of them, that can come in and help us, number one, look at what all of the value judgments and statements are in this proposition, and then look at how there are things that we probably missed or don't know, or assuming, and we're not getting to where we need to get to. I know that's how insurance works, because I've had to sit on these committees. And I'm not that, I'm not a brilliant guy, but I'm pretty smart. And I've sat on them, and I listen, and I say, okay, the guy from Brown and Brown will say, hey, you made this assumption, that's pretty much wrong, right? And without experts being in the room, and I'm not saying that we don't have experts that Brown and Brown and other folks that advise us, but you sometimes need an extra set of eyes. And I'm asking that the board, that we do that, we have, do share responsibility to do that, because this is the money that we're spending, and this is the money that we're trying to help our employees with. What's going to happen? And this is the truth. Employees are going to make a decision to either accept it and not like it, so guess what they're doing? Applying other places. They're either going to go to the private marketplace and can't have or won't have insurance for themselves, or their families, or can't afford what they really want, or number three, they're going to go without insurance. And I'm just telling you right now, you may believe what you believe, anybody can believe whatever they want to believe, but I think having good quality health insurance is a human, basic human right. Whether you're in the union or not in the union, you work here, and I think that is, and it should be at a rate that you can afford. Affordability, when they say affordable housing, people, I hate that term, because affordable housing is based upon what you can afford. I can afford something different than somebody else. And so we need to make sure that we have something that goes, that spreads the gamut to make sure that everybody can afford health insurance. There are families, we're thinking about families here. And so now, families have to go bear, if one goes bear and something happens, I'm not going to sleep at night knowing that I didn't do anything. Yes, the committee met, but knowing that I did nothing when people were calling would haunt me.
Any other comments?
Trustee Gibbons, I think, I think everybody can agree that health insurance is so important. It's obviously not just a local debate or a college debate. This is a national debate. It's a national problem that is, you know, not going to go away anytime soon. I feel like one of the things, and I was not part of the conversation from a few years ago, but I can tell you that in the last couple of years, as this issue has come up, that I know every member of the board is always listening and wants to bring forward the best opportunities and plans, health insurance, programs for all of the employees. So, you know, I would agree with you that I think that finding, making sure that we have the best thing is extremely important, one of the most important things, both in retaining our employees, attracting new employees. But this is something that we will continue every year to have to look at, evaluate, and bring forward the best plans. evaluate and bring forward the best plans for our folks. And it sounds like we have had the right people in the room in the past and we will continue to go ahead and bring those folks forward. So there's no other comments on that. I think we'll move on. And thank you to all the speakers that came today. Appreciate you taking the time. I can tell you that we are listening, we hear you. And, you know, there's, in my mind, there's never an issue that is closed and done. I think that we all can agree that we'll continue to take those comments and make the absolute best choices we can to move this institution forward. So thank you all. With that, just for the record, we did pass the minutes. Those were approved. And we'll move on. Mia, do you have a report today? All right, perfect, thank you. With that, I think Dr. Leo Trump, you're up.
Good morning, Vice Chair Butt.
Good morning.
Board, President Williams. Happy to be here this morning to talk about the success of our students over the summer of 2022. As we do these regular reports on student success, we're usually looking at the academic term and comparing how our students fared over the most recent term and compare them over a year ago. And then we start looking at different groups of students generally by demographics to see, to make sure that we are serving them all well across the different demographic categories. One of the biggest brag points I want to share about the summer of 2022 is that we closed the student success gap to 8% for the first time on a whole-term basis for African-American men. This has been a long-term goal. And I credit the faculty and the staff and the students who did the work for closing that gap. We still have ways to go, we're still at 8% now, but we have finally closed that to 8%. We also look at other different demographic groupings of students. So our worst, our worst story to tell about the summer is for our first time in college, Hispanic men, we did have a decrease in student success. But it's a small group. This is a total of three grades that were not passing versus passing. So that, just because it's a small number of students. Overall, Hispanic men increased their student success by 4.6%. So we had one, one small pivot, but it was purely for that first time in college Hispanic men. Looking at our different modalities and different courses, looking, do want to brag that for the first eight-week term and for the second eight-week term, African-American men and women did very well. And our gateway courses of political science 2041 and computer skills 1070, they did very well. We continue to have challenges in the introductory English class, ENC 1101. So we're continually to looking at different course-specific issues in that particular course. This particular term in math, 1105, did not fare as well. So we've had successes in math over the last several years. This is a little bit of a setback, so we're looking to see if there's something specific to that particular class. We do note for math 1105 and ENC 1101, the majority of students took these classes online rather than face-to-face over the summer. And we do know that there's a modality effect, especially for these introductory classes. And so again, looking to see how we could best serve students who need the flexibility of an online class, but maybe better served by a more engaging and enriched classroom setting. So looking at how we could better serve them. And finally, readmitted students, students who had stepped out for a while and then came back did not do as well this summer. But that's kind of an overview of where we are this summer for overall student success. At the end of summer term, we had 908 students who completed 945 degrees, diplomas and certificates. Thirty-four students did multiple degrees and certificates. Were also, and then among the students who completed roughly, just shy of two-thirds were women and just shy of 40% were minority students. Looking at our enrollment for fall, we continue to have, the AA degree is our largest single degree. But then if you combine the AS and certificates and bachelor's degrees, we then get the majority of our actual degrees that students are pursuing are in the workforce and ready to work rather than doing a transfer to state university plan. And we just have under one-fifth are undecided, undeclared. That can be dual enrollment students who are just taking a class, so they're not in a pathway. Or, for example, my very own daughter completed her associate's degree last spring, doing the pathway for computer science transfer to USF, decided over the summer that she'd rather transfer to UF in Business. And so she's back with SPC, taking a couple of business classes and so is classified as an undeclared student in that bucket. And that's the type of things that we get in undeclared. We still want to get those students on a pathway, but just because slightly under one out of five are undeclared doesn't mean that they don't have a goal. Which just doesn't fit our traditional 10 pathways that we look at. We continue to serve the underrepresented, so we're slightly increased in our minority student population. It's generally increasing about 1% a year, so we're up 1.1% this year. Average age of our students declined a little bit during the pandemic and it's remaining at that lower level of average age of 26, decreased from 27 prior to the pandemic. Three in five students are women. Big change this fall is almost 8%, or we had an almost 8% increase in our students who are attending SPC full-time. So maybe it's a backlog from the pandemic. It's, but it's also, we have noticed that we have a larger yield from the high schools this year. So we are pulling a higher percentage of graduates from Pinellas County Schools this year. So we do have an increase in that. The one other piece we also look at is how our enrollments compared to our projections and our budgets. Last year, we finished fall where our enrollment was 95.4% to our budgeted enrollment. As of yesterday, we are at 99.7% of enrollment to our budgeted enrollment. That's a gap of less than $100,000. And so I trust Vice President Hunt to find that $100,000 for us. But credit that to everyone who's working on recruiting students, everyone who's working on retaining students, and of course, the students who have chosen to advance their lives through higher education. We can, excuse me. We continue looking at fall enrollment because we just started the express term. We still have the second eight-week term starting for this fall. And then we are continually to looking at recruiting drives for spring term, summer, and again, next fall because some students start making their plans more than a year ahead. So we have a variety of different activities that we could speak to if people have any questions about any of those different activities for recruiting. We also are focusing on retention and how we retain students. This is a sampling of the different retention projects that we have going on. A lot of investment in faculty, going for AQ certification, focusing on culturally relevant pedagogy, faculty book club on creating the path to success in the classroom, but also some student support programs like One Goal. We've updated our incomplete grade policy. We're implementing a midterm progress report this fall for the first time in more than 10 years because of technology problems. We're finally able to fix that during completion days. We have a lot of different programs that we're working on to make sure that we retain our students so they can be successful, connecting a course completion to continuing with the college, to finishing that diploma, degree, certificate and entering the workforce or advancing in the workforce as they move forward. So any questions on the summer success rates or fall enrollment?
Ms. Chair, real quick, just two quick questions. You said the average age was 26. Dr. Leo Trump, great numbers, by the way. Do we know if those folks are leaving the workforce and coming or are getting retooled and retrained? And/or are they, do we know, I know you said most of them are women. Are they parents? Do we know whether they're parents or not?
So we still have our full range of students enrolled at the college. What we are getting is, we're getting a little bit more of traditional age students this fall. So that's the only thing, is a little higher proportion of traditional age students than we have had in recent years.
Sure. Thank you. That's it.
I was going to ask a similar question. The increase of full-time students, are we seeing a decrease in the average age? Maybe you also said our high school enrollings are increasing.
Right. So these are definitely connected. They're getting a little younger, more full-time, just because we are getting more from the high schools.
I feel like three or four years ago, we have it 32 is our average age. Is a big difference.
And a quick question, based on the data for those two, I think you called them gateway classes, and knowing that student population that is struggling to get through those courses, how do we drive those students, when they register for those classes, how can we get them on campus in a classroom to be able to increase that rate?
Right. So one of the challenges is, if you're in the workforce, it's hard to come to campus. So one of the things that we did introduce during the pandemic was our live online classes, which is a real-time online class. Still, you know, you meet on the computer, face-to-face, but you're able to do it from home. So we have been looking at our scheduling of those courses to really help our working professionals be able to do live online. So it gives them the flexibility without having to come to campus. We're still tweaking the scheduling piece, but we are seeing, we continue to see some success with managing how we do the modalities to best serve our students. We also advise our students, just because it's flexible online doesn't mean it's the best class to take. Don't you want to see other students? Don't you want to be part of that college experience? So that sometimes pulls people in. But again, if you're working, you've got, or you've got a family, you've got all these other competing commitments on your time. So that's the challenge.
Great, thank you.
Greetings again. I am here for our second presentation of the day.
I'd like to call up Dr. Matthew Leo Trump.
So I'm happy to present the first-year results of our current strategic plan, innovating our future 2024, educate, empower and engage. As you'll recall, we have our mission statement. The mission of St. Petersburg College is to empower our students and community to achieve success and economic mobility through academic excellence and engagement. We have our vision of, we will be, you know, we are premier college to enrich and strengthen lives through a community of care. And we have our values that guide our behavior as we do this. Our strategic plan is based on three pillars and two foundational elements. Our three pillars are academic excellence, economic mobility and community engagement. Foundational elements are financial vitality and employee experience and engagement. As part of our strategic plan, we made some specific commitments this cycle. We are committing to be innovative and engaged. We're, we create opportunities for our students. We invest in the well-being and growth of our community. And so these have helped guide the specific goals we have for each of our three pillars and two foundational elements. I'm going to skip ahead to the dashboard because this is the geek sheet. And so for all of my statistics friends, this is what we love. And then I'll come back a little bit more and look through the different pillars to do a deeper dive. So on this dashboard, the cheat sheet is green means go, blue means we're getting colder. Looking at academic excellence, our first pillar, we were looking at closing the black retention gap to 5%. Retention means coming back after a year and the gap between all students and black students. And what we have done is we've continued year over year to close that gap. Unfortunately, this past year, overall retention suffered. But African-American student retention did not suffer to the, as great a degree as overall retention. So we actually continue to make multiple-year progression towards closing the gap. And that's what we want to see in a strategic plan, multiple-year progression towards our goal. I do these regular reports on summer term or fall term or spring term, but this is looking at the long term. And this means that overall, we're doing things to take us in the right direction. Second measure in academic excellence is close 150% grad rate gap to 2%. This is, two things on this. We're looking at SPC versus the nation for two-year degrees. And then we decided to make it harder on ourselves because we already exceeded the nation in terms of full-time students, their graduation rate. So where it says nation, that's the graduation rate for full-time students at two-year schools, 28%, 29%, 30%. We're already in the 30% for all, every year. We wanted to also include our part-time students. So our numbers in that column for SPC where it says 24, 23, 24, that's full-time and part-time students. We want to make sure that if you're a full-time or part-time student, you will still do better here than you would on your average to your school anywhere in the United States. And we continue to make progress in that. We don't have the national data yet for 2021, but we do, we did get the national data for 2020, 2021. And we did exceed the national, or we did continue to close that gap looking at our full-time and part-time students. So it's a little bit of a tricky number, but it's basically, it's because we're making it harder on ourselves just to get to that number. Third one in academic excellence is the success gap. Closing the success gap for different demographic populations to 8%. So this is the full year of data, not just fall term, spring term, summer term. So summer term, we did great. Fall term, we did pretty good, depending on the different lengths of term. Winter term, we did amazing. Spring, we did great in the first eight-week term, not so great in the second eight-week term. So the overall average for our students, we essentially closed that gap for Hispanic students. We are not there quite yet for African-American students, but we continue to make progress for African-American students overall. So that's kind of our, serving all our students well. Second pillar, economic mobility. So it's in the bottom middle. Looking at our goals for economic mobility is help the county achieve a 60% degree attainment. So it's not just us, it's partnering with USFSP, with Eckert, with other schools in our area, but also help make sure that we are where the students are to help them achieve where they want to go. The data we get from the county lags a little bit, so we had 2019 data. Unfortunately, because of COVID, the county did not run 2020 data. So we are having to wait on the county for 2021 data. The second goal in economic mobility was, we were number five across the Florida college system for job, job completion, or I'm sorry, job placement rate. We wanted to make top four. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, we have a bunch of three-way ties, or a bunch of different ties. So there are, we are tied with 10 other schools to be number 18 among the state college. But, and the differential is less than a percent for all of this. And it's definitely a pandemic effect. So we're continuing to look to see what we can do better to serve our county and our community and see what the other schools are doing to understand how COVID is affecting them and see if there's anything we can learn from them. The third pillar is community engagement, community and civic engagement. We had several different goals. One of them is increase the number of classes that do service learning or community-engaged learning. We have 105 classes this past year that did community-engaged learning, where the class did some sort of service outreach or service impact for the county. This is in the top right-hand corner, sorry. We had 105 classes. This was an increase of 11 classes. And thank you, Dr. Taryn Newsom, for leading this effort. Hours increased by 22,000 service hours. So we hit 51,000 service hours through these class engagements in our community. And the economic impact that we did was $1.5 million, an increase of $700,000 over the prior year. So we definitely did very well in community engagement. And Dr. Taryn Newsom, or Professor Taryn Newsom is the lead for a lot of this. So we thank her for that. Happy birthday. The two foundational elements, we have financial vitality. Our goal is to keep our primary reserve ratio above 40% and we increased it from 51% to 64%. This is one of those things where we can have too much of a good thing. We really don't want to be 100%. So we do need to spend down some of the reserves. But we are continually to be very well fiscally managed. So thank you, Vice President Hunt. And finally, employee engagement and experience. Looking at some standard benchmarks for the industry, the time to fill a vacancy, keeping it less than 45 days. We've trended downward from, a couple of years ago, we were 70 days to fill a vacancy. We're still at, we went up a little bit from 67.5 to 67.8, I think, is the number. Sorry, my eyes are failing me, too. And so we're still far away from 45, but we're working on that. We're increasing the employee training hours to 15 hours each employee. And we continue to improve, increase, invest in our employees, faculty, staff in terms of different professional development opportunities. And finally, reduce the first-year turnover to less than 10%. So essentially, if you hire someone, we don't want them to leave because we're investing in them. And so we want to have less than one in 10 leave the college in the first year. And we have dropped down from, two years ago, we were at 22% to this past year, we were at 11%, just above that 10% threshold. So that's kind of the cheat sheet of where we ended up on our, on our metrics for this past year. Just a reminder, academic excellence is supporting, closing the achievement gaps through excellence in teaching and in teaching and ensuring students are learning by supporting faculty for student success, foster student progression, completion, and transitions. Next month, when you, you board champions are meeting with your committee chairs, they will be talking through all the different activities that we covered, that we engaged in the last year to achieve that outcome. Economic mobility, preparing students for in-demand careers and driving economic growth in the community, preparing students for the workforce. Again, next month, go through with appropriate board champion on all the different activities. Community engagement, serving as a catalyst for positive change in our community through key partnerships, civic engagement, service learning, integrating community and civic engagement, many activities that the board champion will hear next month. Employee engagement, building an inclusive culture of care and sense of belonging to strengthen employee engagement, productivity, and growth, hire and retain excellent employees, many activities over the past year. And finally, financial vitality, delivering the strength vision, the strategic vision using financially sustainable and entrepreneurial practices while maintaining affordability for students, reinforce transparency and sound financial model, and again, all the different activities of the past year. So that's kind of the overview of the first year of the strategic plan. I want to thank Dr. Williams for her leadership. I want to thank all the faculty and all the staff for all the work that they've done on this, and I think a round of congratulations for the college employees is deserved. Yep. Right. Then just want to kind of telegraph looking forward to, oh, you want to do a question now? Sure.
Yeah, it's a great strategic plan. We still have an issue where we're trying to close gaps of minorities, keep them here. We're throwing the most resources at that particular group of students. What would you say, is there anything else that we need to be doing, or are we missing something? Are we, I mean, what is the evaluation of why we are not still just can't close that particular divide?
We're making slow and steady progress, so we do need to stay the course. And partly, that's changing the culture of the institution, partly adjusting, better serving our community. You know, if there was one magic bullet, if we had unlimited dollars, I would give unlimited scholarships so that students wouldn't have to worry about things beyond being a college student, so that they could, you know, have that time to focus on their studies.
Do you still think that's a big significant issue for minority students?
I think it is.
Okay.
I think it is. Because, you know, if you're a parent, no, if you're a parent and you have to worry about childcare, it's going to take away your attention. If you're an employee and you have to worry about your job, that's going to take you away from your studies. So if we, you know, we can make, you know, being a student number one thing, you know, affordably, that would really help drive a lot of student success. Thank you.
Trusty Gibbons, Mr. Chair. I also think that for our minority students, the out-of-class support has been very helpful. I think the good work of the faculty inside the class, because it's the course that they have to get through, and so I think it's the experience in the classroom, Trusty Gibbons as well, is an area that we continue to work on, because our student population may look similar, but the problems have changed. It takes a lot more work, and I think the faculty would agree, to get a student across the stage. I see Tara shaking, yes, I see Dean de Mers. And so I think the, also the inside class experience, Trusty Gibbons is one, and as we expand out in our online, and our blended, and our live online classes, I think that's still a challenge for a lot of our minority students, is the online experience as well. And so these are areas that I believe we really need to step our game up in as well.
Are there more resources we need to throw at it? I'm just asking that question, because it seems like it's lagging behind, not that we're not doing a good job at it.
Right.
I'm just saying it's lagging behind. I would like to know if there's something that the board can do more to enhance that particular area to make sure that our students are more successful. I want every student to be successful, whether they're black, white, blue, brown, wherever they're from, doesn't matter to me, but it seems like that these students still are not where we want them to be, right? And is there something we do on the front end? I don't know, I'm just asking that question. Is there something that we could evaluate? But I remember the school board got mad, they still haven't met with us again, because I called, I told, I called them out on, they were just, you know, promoting students, and they thought this was a 13th grade, and what the product that we were getting was not prepared. Is there something we can do in the high schools? I see that we're getting more of the high school students. Is there something we can do in the high schools to help them be more prepared? I'm not sure, I'm just asking the question, because I see them still lagging behind.
We're definitely doing work within the high schools better. We receive funding from the state to do some work with K-12. We also, with the Helios funds that we receive, we're also working with K-12. I think the other piece is to hear from the faculty who are teaching those online classes, what the other resources that are needed to teach the students. Some of it may be training for the faculty, and some of it may be tools. I don't know Trusty Gibbons, so I can't say exactly what that would be, but the good news about Dr. Leal-Troth, he meets with the faculty on a regular basis online, I believe, and we should probably ask what would be some other resources they need in the classroom, because it's really the classroom that we need to get the students through, so that they pass and progress, you know, they pass the course and progress. I think even the midterm grades would be very helpful for students to really understand where they are before they withdraw, thinking that maybe they weren't succeeding, but the midterm grades would give them sort of a cheat sheet on where they are in the course.
Thank you. Any comments? The other thing I did want to preface was, looking from our strategic plan, one of the external validations we're looking for ourselves as a college is being included on the Aspen list of 150 best two-year schools in the country. By focusing on closing achievement gaps, increasing degree attainment, and increasing job placement, this definitely helps on all of these different measures for the Aspen Prize. And just kind of an update, the Aspen Prize is done every other year, in even number, or, sorry, odd number of years, they announce it in the fall. And we track the data on what's going on with us. We then look at the 150 schools identify and how we compare to those 150 schools, and then we look at the national average on those metrics. They do change the metrics every cycle, so you can't, you know, predict exactly how you're being measured, but these are the measures that have been pretty consistent across the different years. So looking in 2021, what it was, then we looked in 2023, what it was, 2024, we just kind of did a benchmark to get a sense of where we were compared to the nation. And so looking, because of the data is based on prior year's data, we already know the data for SPC that will be used for the 2025 year. And so, and we know the, and we will find out the national data later this fall, so we can compare where we are with the nation. Definitely our COVID impacts for all the schools, so it's hard to assess where we are compared to the nation at this point, or what the top 150 will look like, but we are increasing on all of these metrics in terms of first-year retention rates, three-year graduation rates, eight-year full-time completion outcomes, completers per 100 full-time equivalent students, or, and eight-year part-time completion outcomes. So all of these are increasing. So just letting you know that we are tracking this in the background, although we won't have anything to announce for another year.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you for this slide specifically. I know when we were doing our strategic planning, it wasn't, thank you, Mary, turning over names today, suggested Aspen as a, as a reach mark. We weren't really sure how that was going to play out, because we all know that that is something we would aspire to, but how did that translate to the numbers? And we've always tracked against the state average and the national average, and have watched us improve since we've been here over the past five years specifically on those. So seeing this is very good for me to see how the strategic plans might end to this, that we're not only, we may, because if we had stopped your slide before, we would have, I think, all given ourselves a pat on the back, maybe the state national average is right. So seeing this slide really shows what that reach mark is and where we aspire to be as an institution, so.
We think of at least this information each semester to see where, where we are as far as looking forward. Can't go back and change a lot of things in the, in the past, but you can improve what we're doing now going forward. But there are opportunities to reach back to those students from, you know, 2018 and other areas to try to get them to finish, and so we are taking this very seriously. And as you can see, even with the strategic plan and work with President Mary, we're moving on.
And that completes the presentation. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, Dr. Misty Kemp, Titan Care Centers.
Each month, you've asked me to bring a student-facing initiative to the board, and so, Dr. Kemp will be bringing us that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Butts, members of the board, and President Williams. While you are certainly welcome to call up Dr. Matthew Leal-Troth to give the third presentation, I really enjoy the opportunity to come before you. As Dr. Williams shared, I have the pleasure of bringing the student engagement piece and talking about an initiative that we've been working on for more than five years, and that's the Grade School to Graduation Project. And now, we've been able to deliver this through our Titans Care Centers. What you see before you on this slide are some of the 31 different programs and services available to all Titans. And when I say all Titans, I want to let you know that we have programs that reach back as far as third grade. So these programs and services are in place throughout the county and all of our campuses and centers to ensure that our students have access to free, out-of-class academic supports and basic needs. Here before you, as I said, are just some of the 31 programs that we have, and one of the things that we took a look at was the naming of our departments. The last time we met, it was at the Tarpon Springs campus, and I talked about the retention hubs. Well, today, we're happy to say that we are able to embody the mission, vision, and values of this college by presenting the Titans Care Centers to our students and engaging an opportunity to bring them out of the classrooms into environments where they can network, they can join one another in academic studies, but also just a place to be a student. We want to keep them on campus, we want to keep those engagement and opportunities. And I'm happy to share, this slide presents the Clearwater Campus. We were able to do our first ribbon cutting of our Titans Care Centers. You see many of our staff represented here, as well as some of the welcome-back events that happened. We have tabling opportunities for students to come and learn about our programs and services. We gave them an opportunity to reopen that top picture, the family clothing closets. One of the things that we wanted to make sure as we were opening these centers is that we started a soft launch in January, really giving students an opportunity to come, kind of get a feel for these spaces, working on recruitment, identifying the additional barriers that exist for them outside of the class, and making sure that when we launched this one-stop concept, we really were bringing forward the vision of our students and helping celebrate the welcome-back opportunities. As I mentioned, that top-right picture is our family closets. Not only do we have the opportunity through Women on the Way and FAME, our Florida African-American male initiative, to provide clothing for our students, but we learned that some of the struggles they're going through are providing for their children, so that becoming Titans have an opportunity to get the skills and supports that they need when they are ready to be a Titan. On this slide here, as I mentioned, some of the 31 programs and services, we've broken it down in a little more detail. The things that we have been able to offer, back-to-school supplies, making sure that students have access to childcare, those being one of the barriers, if their children are not in a safe environment, how are they able to focus on their studies? We've been able to expand those services, and I'll give you a little more detail on that later. We are reinvigorating our food pantries, and the partnership that we have through our foundation and the community, really starting to bring in these wonderful opportunities to provide food, not just food that they can take home to their families, but a place where they can nourish themselves on campus and get ready as they head to class. Our mental health counseling services, I'm going to brag a little bit about that on my last slide, but what you do see here is also the ribbon cutting for the Gibbs Campus. So in the fall, we hosted a ribbon cutting, North and South County, Gibbs and Clearwater. I'm excited to share that coming in the spring, we're going to also do the ribbon cutting for downtown, midtown, Tarpon Springs, and Seminole. So stay tuned to hear more about those. So this is a slide I really enjoy. What has been our impact? What are the things that we have been able to do to help our Titans remain successful and help them across that stage? I mentioned that we started this off-launch in January, and this is probably one of our proudest moments. During a time when folks were still hesitant to come back to campus, our goal was to remove the stigma for asking for help, making sure that they knew that SPC really has this offer of inclusive care and support. So over 4,281 students have actually come in and signed up for services. These are new students, these are not continuing, so we are adding to the, to the group of students that we're able to support. As I mentioned, for childcare, we have now maxed out, we are serving over 60 families, that's the highest we've been able to offer in the last three years. We're coming into the fourth and final year of this grant, and we're looking forward to the reapplication, so that we can almost double the amount of families that we are providing free childcare services to. One of the things that I'm also excited about sharing is, yes, we have been able to help support narrowing the achievement gap for our Black African-American males, and the Helios Foundation opportunity has given us that. Chair Butts, you had asked a question about the gateway courses, and one of the things that I want to share is, we completed our first cohort of Summer of Success for the FAME program. Along with feedback from faculty and students, we actually wanted to take a look at how we could support decreasing the student outcomes, if you will, and increasing the student achievement. So working with our faculty, we've created custom cohorts, and we're going to be able to start looking at the data for our Black African-American men in our FAME program in their math, ENC 1101, and college success courses. I'm very excited, again, first term, but in order to do that, we're going to need a little bit of time to kind of collect that, collect that information. The other thing that I'm excited about is because of the success of these cohorts, we have started moving in, and I applaud the faculty that have started the YANA, You Are Not Alone, for our Black African-American females. And then just this summer, a group of faculty and staff came together to launch our Hispanic-Latinics Task Force, and we're starting to set the goals and the plans for the next strategic year's goals, and be looking forward to reporting that to you. As I mentioned, the work that has gone into re-establishing our food pantries and our partnership. In the spring, we were able to collect on a one-day spring training, 100 pounds of food, and we're able to disseminate that to families. We got a wonderful donation from one of our foundation partners, we were able to move forward in purchasing refrigerators. We have one, two at downtown, one at midtown, and two here at Gibbs. We're getting ready to purchase additional ones for Tarpon, Clearwater, and Seminole, so now we can provide fresh fruits, vegetables, meats, cheeses, milk products to our students. So stay tuned to hear more about that success. We have 121 students that have visited our new assistive technology labs. These are classrooms that have been retrofitted with assistive technology, so students that need access to additional resources, not only can they come into these environments, but faculty and their supports are their families, their tutors, can come into this environment to find out how we leverage the ever-changing world of technology to increase academic success. We have 191 students to date for this year, again, January to present, that have utilized the DCF waivers, and I am proud to say that our mental health and wellness program is thriving. We are removing the stigma for asking for help, we are removing that mental health barrier, and I'm proud to say that due to the support of our foundation, our college leadership, student government, we have tripled the amount of money that we are now putting in for supporting our mental health and wellness platform. Of course, I can brag about my team all day long, but we know it's our partners in and outside of the college that continue to make our programs successful. As I mentioned in my kickoff, these are free services, our students don't have to pay for this. They get to come in to a welcome environment, they get to engage with other community partners, other students, faculty, and staff, they get to feel like there's a place for them to belong. Our goal, to keep them on campus so they can continue towards their academic goals and their career endeavors. Any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Excellent report. Thank you, Misty, I really appreciate that. I will ask Dr. Williams, you know, when y'all get the information related to those gateway courses, I'm interested to see, because one of the things that I read in the district's report, well, somebody evaluated district advances in reports, and it says that white males now are making less gains over four years in high school, and even minorities. And I want to know if we're starting, he's shaking his head, but I, we're starting to see that trend of white males not being able to overcome those gateway courses as well. So that may be another trend that we have to start deal with over time, and, but... So that may be another trend that we have to start deal with over time. But again, it goes back to us being seen as the 13th grade as opposed to needing to be prepared when we get here.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Perfect. I think that there was several items in our books for review, entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So I'm moving, Mr. Chair, that we take the consent agenda as a whole?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Passes. Any new business, old business, new business, any business?
It's a lot of business.
You were provided informational reports?
Another informational report, so Mr. Chair.
That's a reading.
Anything else?
So last month, I had the opportunity of joining the Commissioner and the State Board of Education. Last week, I had the opportunity of joining the Commissioner and the State Board of Education on their LBR and was very pleased to see that the Florida colleges were listed in the LBR. We have not been listed in the way that we were listed in at least maybe 10 sessions. And so we're real pleased to see that we ended up with $50 million in there for the operational pieces to help us with the new funding formula. We ended up with six more million dollars for our short-term workforce kind of training programs. We ended up, the system itself received a recommendation of like $74 million for building renovations and things of that nature, things that the college system used to have to go out and try to ask for on its own. Our commissioner has shown great support for the college system. And so we're real pleased with that. We are moving forward with our plan to put in a LBR and a request for all the Florida colleges to be included in the state insurance plan. We have our second meeting next week about that. We're meeting this Thursday about that, the Council of Presidents. And so we are still working on an insurance solution. I'm just glad to be a part of that, to make that happen. Hopefully, soon, the governor's budget will be coming out, and everyone's waiting to see that. And after the elections, we'll start moving on our plans. We do have, Amal has set up meetings. We've had a few meetings with our local legislators so far. And with COP, I've had a chance to speak with the incoming speaker, and we'll continue to move forward. But that is my report for now.
Great.
Oh, there's one other thing. I did have an opportunity to speak at the mayor's council two weeks ago. And so for the provost, we're going to need to work on our strategy with the mayors. They were very thrilled since we received feedback from the city of Clearwater to work with us with almost a possibility of $700,000. And so we do have opportunities with our local cities, and we need to make sure that we're tied closely with them. And so we'll be looking into that in more detail. I have been asked to join the mayor's council, and I can come every month. And I will probably try to start attending more of those meetings to see what they're working on and look at how we can come together as a team. So I'm real pleased with that, and that will be the end of my report.
Great. Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be October 18th at the Epicenter.
Yep.
Once again, like to thank everybody for coming, for their comments, for the hard work that you do every day for this college. And we're going to adjourn this meeting.
Right.
And we will be coming back as the governing board of the St. Pete Collegiate High School, but this meeting is adjourned. Thank you again.
All right.
Good morning, Vice Chair Butts, Madam President, board members. I'm Catherine Kennedy, and I'm before you today to seek your approval for three forms, one for each of our collegiate high schools. This is for the Automated School Messenger Program. This costs $1.15 per student. So for the year, it's going to be a little over $550 that we do have in our collegiate high school budget to pay for. But it's for the automated phone calls and the automated emails that go out to our families.
I'm here to approve of the Open School Messenger for all persons.
Second.
Ten more.
Oh, can you oppose? No, all in favor? Yes. All passes? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Big spend. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.